The time is now 5:48 on August the 27th, 2025. And this special meeting of El Campo Independent School District Board of Trustees called to order. Let the record show this meeting was duly posted in accordance with Section 551.043 Texas Government Code in regard to public meeting, and there is a quorum of members present. If you'll please stand, I will lead the prayer and the pledge. Let's pray. Lord, please guide us as we come together tonight to do the important business of the district. Let us be good stewards of the school district and help us to make the decisions that please you. We ask these things in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How are you? You fine?
Look at that, no sling.
Look at these chairs, that's what I'm talking about. Way to go, D'Amici, about time.
There's the special mention.
You haven't even been here, what?
Need to check my emails out a little bit better.
This is the section of the... This meeting is especially set aside for public comment and public hearing. There's no...I don't believe there's anyone signed up for public comment. So we will conduct a public hearing on the proposed budget and tax rates for 2025, 2026.
We have no one here to speak, so...
That is...that will conclude our public hearing. The time is now 5:50. Call this meeting adjourned with no further business. The time is now 6:00 PM on August the 27th, 2025, and this regular meeting of the El Campo Independent School District Board of Trustees is called to order. Let the record show that this meeting was posted...was duly posted with Section 551.043 Texas Government Code, and there is a quorum of members present. If you'll stand up, Mr. Dubraker will lead the prayer and the pledge.
Lord, thank you for this chance to come together to do the business of the school district. Help us to keep our priorities in line and to focus on the people and what we need to do to grow and be better at what we're doing here. We thank you for your...for all that you do for us. We just ask that you lead us and guide us through this evening and all that we do for the school district. Thank you, and in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At every meeting, we set aside time for both public testimony and public comment. Has anyone signed up for either? There's with no one signing up for either public comment or public testimony. Just want to let the public know that we do open the floor for that, and there's some stipulations that go with how that process is handled. But we'll move on to...we have recognition?
No recognition.
No recognition.
Just started school.
That's right. Nobody's done anything to be recognized for?
Probably did.
I tell you, I'll recognize the volleyball team last night. It was...I was...we went and it was a heck of a battle, and it was really encouraging to see the girls fight it out and win in five games. It was good, great game.
They didn't...
Victoria West?
Victoria East.
East, that's right, Victoria East. And really, really good support too, great crowd. And great scorekeeper. Only one...only one...only one time did I think, oh, man. Hope she gets a...hope she hit the wrong button.
I hit the wrong button, I reset.
Reset. And it was a close game, too.
I got into a little panic mode and then I was...
The...we'll move on to the item 5C1, which is...
Do you want to skip the...
I'm sorry, my apologies. I'm getting ahead of myself. That moves us on to our consent agenda. Yeah. Consent...item number four is our consent agenda according to local policy BE. Consent agenda is provided that includes items of a routine and reoccurring nature under one action item. Board members have been...have been provided background for each of the...each of the items in the consent agenda. Unless a board member wants to have one...an individual item withdrawn for consideration, we act on those with one separate vote. Is there any item that anyone would like to see taken out of the consent agenda to be considered?
I'd like to pull the consideration of item E1.
Okay, we'll pull item E1. With the exception of that, are there...is there anything else anybody would like to consider individually? Okay. We'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item E1, student code of conduct. I'll seek a motion.
Motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Cannell, a second by Ms. Smith. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Mr. Ryan, I'll let you lead the discussion on item E1. Consider approval of the 2025-26 Student Code of Conduct.
Before Mr. Ryan does, I just want to make sure, board members, you have a packet at your desk.
It's this.
Yeah, I brought this into attention several months ago on the list of code of...violations by class, and I was just trying to get everybody's opinion on it. I just wanted to hear, I know that there was some...maybe I didn't bring it up right. This was not a...anything to do...I didn't consider administration into this when I brought this to Bob and some other people. I was making it...this is a simple form, so you can read it easily as a parent or as a student, instead of reading the student handbook, code of conduct, as a legal form. And this kind of just summarizes it, brings it into form that everybody can understand it. That was my attempt, just so everybody knows that.
To improve the readability of what we already have.
Correct, to make it...to simplify, because there's nothing in this that's not already in the student handbook.
Well, let's clarify, just so...for language case, the handbook is one thing, the code of conduct is another. And so this is...
Code of Conduct.
This is what...
This is code of conduct.
No, no, I just want...people are watching in the newspapers here. I want to make sure they know exactly what we're talking about. So this is a code of conduct. I will say, I need to applaud both Mr. Ryan and Ms. Starry, because I think they've both put a lot of time and effort into this discussion. Ms. Starry brought this in front of all the principals at the leadership retreat, and then after the leadership retreat, we both met with Mr. Ryan again. And so rather than just have this go through the consent agenda where it typically goes, because it's a state document that comes from a combination of Tazby and our legal firm, he asked for it to be pulled, and so we did that.
So what is...and I'm not...I don't...I didn't look...I haven't looked at our current one. I'm assuming our current one is similar to years past, Tazby model. Walsh Anderson signed off on it.
Correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So it's like other...so this is just the same meat, it's just different?
So what are you going to do with this?
Well, let me...I think I'm probably the best either that or Ms. Starry, either one of us. There are some districts, and we try to present this to the principals. There are some districts who put the general conduct violations by class in the beginning of the code of conduct, and it varies. Some school districts do, others do not. For example, Katie does, Lamar doesn't. As we discuss this with principals, and I'm going to make sure that Ms. Starry, because she really did the yeoman's work, I'm just kind of the bystander. She put in a lot of time and effort with Mr. Ryan, and now Mr. Ryan met with our principals. The issue comes down to from...we have all the principals here, so please feel free if the board would accept any comments from the principals.
I have a question. Go ahead. Okay, so what we have in here on the...in the board book, okay, where it starts on whatever page 64 and goes all the way through, are we...are we saying that we're going to take that out and put this in place of it?
This is an addition.
And this is an addendum?
This is...
It's a summarization of infractions and punishments for each infraction.
So ours...correct me if I'm wrong. Our current copy of the Student Code of Conduct, it does not define the Class 1, Class 2, Class 3, and the automatic...and the automatic punishments as consequences for those.
Correct.
Okay.
For each class, it does not. It says as general violations, and so they're general, but then it also goes into what has to be, could be DAP or mandated DAP, what could be discretionary, OSS, ISS, mandatory. So it does go into those, but as far as general violations, it doesn't.
So our code of conduct has all the...all the other parts to it. It just la...it lacks basically, in summary, it lacks the Class 1 and the automatic...and the automatic knee-jerk punishment for that. And then if it's a Class 2, Class 3, Class 4...
Correct.
That's the...that would be the...
Specific.
It's very specific.
It's more detailed, it's more detailed, yes. Yes.
So what do the principals, they're the ones...
That's what I was going to say, are y'all happy with this?
The concern, and I don't want to...y'all can speak up, but the concern was about like having the options of what the consequence is going to be. If we put it in writing and we say this is what the consequence is going to be, making sure that we're not looking at the situation individually. I understand the need for consistency, and I think that was what Mr. Ryan was really looking for too, was making sure we're being consistent across the district from campus to campus for the same violations. So that, you know, that's something that we need to work on. But the concern was like you're putting it in writing, you're saying this is what you're going to do. You don't have other options.
Doesn't our code of conduct have in there...
It gives you...it gives you...it does give you like, you can put them in DAP, you can put them in...
Well, I know the man, I know that part, discretionary placements and all that stuff, but for like less severe behaviors.
For less severe, we try to follow a due process where we go with the least consequential behavior determination, which would be some kind of a detention all the way through to a DAP in a due process set random...
But our code of conduct already has that in it.
Correct, so...
Like it says, the conference warning, conference with parents...
Yes.
In schools or detention hall.
It gives us...like it has like techniques that can be used. So it does give some, and then prohibited ones that we can't do. So that is listed in there for like general violations.
But what I'm...this...reading this doesn't say, unless I'm just not getting to the part where it does it, this doesn't say what the consequence is going to be.
It should say Class 1 and then some possible...
Yeah, no, but it doesn't...doesn't say. Like I...I've been boxed in a corner before with a code of conduct as a principal that said, you do this, you get this, and that consequence wasn't always the appropriate consequence for whatever that action was. But I don't see either one of these doing that. This shows multiple options.
So is there a...is there a chronic failure in the document that we currently have adopted that we're seeing inconsistencies across the board where we're losing our campuses because of that?
Well, I think we need to let our principals...
Yes.
Because I think you also need to discuss how you...now Paul's not here, but Sandy probably communicates most with Paul about consequences. And then the other three of you. So explain to the board the process, because I think they're trying to determine where we want to go with this.
So to answer your question, is there a failure with the current system? I would say no.
Okay.
I would say no. Inconsistencies that have happened, I would say, I would love some real examples where someone felt like there was an inconsistency that did not have to do with the students' IEP or special education, sort of, where you have to look at something and make a determination on how their disability may have impacted that behavior. Sometimes that creates what is viewed in the public as inconsistency, but we have to adhere with laws and we have to go through those hearings. We have to go through our process on some disciplinary actions. And so that could create a discrepancy that is viewed...
Perceived.
Perceived, I love that word, yes. But it's...there's nothing we can do. We couldn't possibly justify to the community, oh, well, this student has this disability. We'll just go ahead and tell you why they can't...we can't do that, you know? So it would leave us vulnerable sometimes to look inconsistent. But I'm just going to tell you, Mr. Fleener and I have spoken on the phone, I would say twice, maybe three times already, it's the third week of school, and you know, where I called to say like, okay, I just want to confirm, when we find a student who has a baby pin and it's THC versus nicotine, are we all still doing the same thing? You know, we also talked about sometimes you have to apply age. So if I'm a sixth grader and I'm doing something probably...probably for the first time, and I may have been caught in a situation with peer pressure or whatever, we're going to apply certain standards to the middle level, certain like layers of punishment versus if I'm in high school and I had the means, I chose, I brought this in my car, it couldn't have been my parents, it couldn't have whatever, well, you know, maybe the consequences for them could be a little more super, but it's age appropriate. So as long as we're consistent on my campus, if this is what it gets and it meets in line and I'm consistent, then that's consistent.
I think...thank you, I appreciate that. I think that, and I'll summarize it, y'all tell me if I'm wrong here, though. So our...the board's view of the Student Code of Conduct has always been to develop a Student Code of Conduct that reflected the values of our community. And then we sent that code of conduct to our principals. And we...we trust our principals and hire them specifically to make decisions based on complex situations, because very rarely things that happen on a campus are cut and dry. But...and we...and that's one reason we evaluate our principals so hard, is because we want to make sure that they're adhering in all situations to the broad umbrella of the Student Code of Conduct, but also applying their professional knowledge to each scenario, each situation. That's how...that's why I kind of would lean toward the existing document. I'm not saying that...I'm not saying that this...these are bad ideas, but I do think that in a district our size, we're close enough to the fire, meaning we basically have, you know, a very small number of campuses where Mr. Callahan and the leadership can still really understand on a daily basis what's going on and without getting too far out in the ditch and having a campus that, man, they're not doing anything that they're supposed to be doing at elementary school. I just don't think that would be...
I don't see that that's what this is saying.
I don't think...I don't think it says that either. It still gives choices. It still gives choices, but I don't see...I don't see what we're... By adding more words, are we adding more efficiency?
That would be my question too, and that would be my question for Clayton, but just in general. I think a lot of...a lot of this is already in there.
It's a summarization of it, basically, and put in layman's terms where every day person can understand it instead of a legal document.
So we're not...we're not getting rid of the existing?
No, this is just an addition to it.
This would be an addition to the code of conduct.
Which is a summary...this is a summary of the code of conduct.
It's a summarization of the disciplinary problem.
Does anything in this...look, I mean, I'm just looking at the code of conduct now. Does anything in this contradict?
I have not compared the two documents since we've got the new updated one, like to say, they fall under...
That's my, like, off the...
I would recommend that that's done before that...
Not having done my homework would be that if we have... Because this is the kind of stuff, in my experience, that causes problems when we get the least amount of...a miniscule amount of contradiction and any part of this document gets twisted and used. So that would be my concern about adding anything without us having looked at that, because it's...that's...that's the only issue I have with it, that it wouldn't... I don't want to do anything in muddy waters any further. And I have been in situations where the code of conduct didn't match what the campus handbook had because of, you know, typos or just didn't get updated or whatever it is. And when you put things in black and white and it's a contradiction, you put our people, our principals, people who have built this stuff in a bad spot. That's my only issue with it. I don't have a problem. I think I've worked in districts very similar to this.
Yes.
And I don't...and I don't have any issue at all with breaking down the levels of behavior. Like Class 1 is not what Tazby's calls it, I would imagine. They probably call it Level 1 or...
Well, it's general violations.
Yeah, so I would want the terminology to be the same, and you could do that and still have these, but I just...I would be hesitant to put this in there without saying this could be...
Matches.
Matches.
I was trying to give anybody to vote to put it into their way.
Yeah, right.
Because it was just something I wanted to bring to everybody's attention and everybody's opinion if we talk about it.
That's my opinion, that's what I think about it.
Well, I agree.
I would agree too. If somebody can look at one of them and interpret it differently...
And you can have...it can be...I like the word, probably use layman's terms, because we don't use those in schools all the time. We use words that we make up sometimes for things in schools, and I like that aspect of it. But I just wouldn't want to feed them...I don't want to do anything to make things more difficult than what they already are, especially with our intention being, we want to simplify this deal so we can read it, and that's my thought on it.
Well, let me try to summarize the issues. Number one, the Student Code of Conduct is hot off the press because of the 89th legislative session.
Right, right.
So we are trying to get it implemented two weeks after school started, because it wasn't ready when school started.
Right.
When we presented this to the principals, they had the same fears that you have, which is they don't want to have conflicting data. Also, the concern is that most of the district...well, I shouldn't say most, because I don't have that. It's more than 50%. There are many districts who use this that have multiple campus grade levels, multiple high schools, multiple junior highs, multiple middle schools, multiple elementaries, et cetera. And they're looking for consistency. Our principals felt that they were trying to gain consistency through interaction between the groups. The other concern that was brought up was when everything starts being outlined, someone says, well, it's not in...it's not in your laundry list, so therefore, how do you punish? We don't know...we don't know how to answer that today.
Well, it's not in the code of conduct either.
Well, but none of them are laundry listed inside the code of conduct. Correct. When you do a laundry list, it does kind of give you... So what we would propose is to give us this year to look at this, because many school districts use this. I will also tell you, I've had many conversations with Walsh Anderson, Walsh Caigos. They are not opposed to us putting it in there. I think what everybody's concerned about is the time, when we're having to do this.
Right.
And do we have enough time?
Well, going into next year, we're not...shouldn't have any more specializations by that time of the year.
Maybe.
The code of conduct is every other year.
Right, yeah, so we would have a year to play with it a little bit.
I'm solely in the less is more category. I think...I don't think it's...I don't think it's bad to have some...have things not bulleted out, because having been on a high school campus, not as much as rich, but I know that in certain situations, you need some leeway. And at all the levels, you need some...you need some leeway for some real decision-making that doesn't have a bullet point that is there or isn't there. It's kind of like, I mean, reading the insurance contract or anything like that. If it's in there, it's a real problem. But if it ain't in there, you can really solve...you can solve some problems using some ways to get around it. And we're not looking to...we're not looking to not punish or something like that. I think what we're looking for is the best way to solve real world stuff that happens on the campus without having to catch 22 and like, oh, yeah, we would put a bullet point in there. When if the...if the goal is not to change the intent of the code of conduct, if it's just to summarize the code of conduct, that's a whole...in my opinion, that's a whole nother endeavor than what is in this. It would be, you know, take what we already have and say, in this section, you will find. And then maybe...maybe that's a way to approach this. But I wouldn't...I wouldn't be for anything that lists out... What this seems to attempt to do is list out a lot of the things that they think could happen on a campus. And it probably doesn't have everything, and it probably...and it, you know, may not describe it exactly as it happens. And I think you need to not have that in there so that you have the leeway to say, well, here's what we see this as.
Unless you put at the end, this is some of the bullets, but it could be more, or you know, this is...
Yeah, I mean, there's... What's that?
I don't think that this, like...
Handcuffed you with anything.
Yeah, I don't think this takes...my...I mean, I have no...I really actually have... I mean, I think I've operated about 10 years under a code of conduct like this. It's not...it's not an issue, but we have a code of conduct that is, you know, new in trying to add this to it, and I think could cause some confusion and problems for principals at this point in the year.
And really, that's...that's our concern. And I think realistically, folks, if this were an issue per se, there are lots of school districts who have it.
Yeah, I'm just...I don't think it's...I don't think it's an issue, but I don't want to...I don't want it... And I would be willing to put some time into us, like, making things more user-friendly, more layman kind of stuff for next year's code of conduct.
Well, I said I'm not really...I said for that. I was bringing this up to everybody's attention.
Yeah, no, I think it's...
I was going to say for it, you know?
And I'm not...I'm definitely not in love with Tazby.
Well, I will tell you, I mean, I've shared that I've already reached out to Walsh Caigos, so we know that this is out there as a potential. I just will hate to...I'm going to put people involved.
Right.
I hate to put this on Alicia's plate right now.
No, I agree.
When she's already trying to do all of the other things that we find as far as...
Yeah, but we're next year and we wouldn't, you know, we didn't get to code of conduct last week.
Yes.
Well, for this year...for this year, what's in front of us is the consideration of the 2025-2026 code of conduct. Is there any more discussion on this, which seems to be a future endeavor?
Well, I was going to ask before I'm voting on the consent agenda, is there any major differences between this code of conduct and last year's?
There's a few. The personal communication device, as y'all are aware of, is now right here. Using AI for academic dishonesty or engaging in other prohibited conduct is now added in there. The use of DAP for a first-time offense of possession or use of a nicotine delivery product or e-cigarette is more spelled out in there.
It's more spelled out as more...
As...as...before it was that you had to, now it's discretionary, yes. But you can...you can do it for first-time offense.
THC.
Yes.
Mandatory.
Yes, but the...just the e-cigarette in general.
Okay.
ISS is not subject to a time limit anymore. Where it was before, we were...our hands were tied for three days. So...but you must review every 10 days for any placement that's longer than 10 days. So if you're putting a kid in there for longer than 10 days, you have to review it at 10 days.
Review with who?
With the committee, the administrator has to review it.
All students? Because I know it used to be...
It's...this is for a 10-day light duty. Like for a spec student, it's 10 days total. This is 10 days, one placement, yes. So if I'm going to put a kid in ISS for 15 days for something... But we're talking any student, any student. Okay. But they don't have...but in this case, it's talking consecutive, where for a spec student, it's not necessarily consecutive, it's 10 days total. So, yeah, those were the big...those were the big changes.
Okay, thank you. Because I figured you could tell me that rather than...
Yeah.
Can we get a report on how our communication device progresses?
I've heard from several teachers that it's been wonderful with the children not constantly on their phones.
Well, we've got four of them in there.
Teachers, I've heard from teachers.
Especially principals.
Principals, you're being put on the spot.
We've confiscated...at the middle school, we've confiscated one phone so far, but the policy really didn't change for the middle school, because that's what we were already doing. We didn't allow them to have it between classes or at lunch. And ironically, the one that we confiscated was a sixth grader, and I know they weren't allowed to do it at Northside. So anyway, we have unfortunately...
So, um, anyway, we have unfortunately had a few cell phones that have been stolen out of backpacks. I don't really know what that's about, but, um, all have been tracked down and, um, have been dealt with. And in a couple of cases, the police were involved because they were found, you know, off campus at a different location. But, um, as far as in the classroom, we haven't had any problems in the classroom.
What about parents, have you had any trouble with parents?
Uh, not yet. It's coming. It's not a matter of, yeah, it's a matter of when, yeah, when we have an issue, but no, not yet.
And I think the, the, from what I understand, the high schools are very similar to that, I mean, they haven't had, they haven't had a time.
Yeah.
I think Paul told me twenty-six, twenty-six that have been picked up, but at least half of those are multiple, same person, more than once.
They work a little bit better on.
So if you divide twenty-six by, by three, you've only got about nine kids, because several of those nine have had it twice.
Slow run.
What's that?
One percent.
One percent.
I'll, uh, consider a motion for the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six.
Awesome.
Motion by Mr. Dubratt, motion, uh, second by Mr. Pino, all in favor, raise your right hand, oppose, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Uh, that brings us to five C, uh, one, Blue Monet, you're in the leadership update.
So just wanted to give you an update where we're at on Blue Monet, um, everybody's rocking and rolling. We're still missing a few pieces from shipments, but they're coming in. Um, right now, we can really tell that, um, the teachers that were doing it last year with Amplify are starting this year. They feel a lot more ease, they're comfortable doing it, um, they are, they're engaging, more engaging with their lessons because they already kind of know what to do, where the new teachers that are doing it for the first time are overwhelmed. Um, we saw that last year because you got to think about, like, a lot of these teachers have been teaching a long time, they're effective teachers, and we're basically saying, here's something new, here's something different, so it's like being a first year teacher all over again. So they are feeling that, we've told them, I've been very transparent with them, this isn't going to go away in the next month, you're going to feel like this for a few, for, through October, but it's going to get better, it's going to get better. So if you hear that.
Say again, who are the great, the who's been doing it?
So, all of Hutchins, RLA did it last year.
Okay.
So they're kind of rolling with it. Now, they picked up math this year, so the math part is new, but the RLA they did last year. And then we had a couple of teachers at Myatt that did it last year. But all of Northside is new, RLA, and then all of the rest of the kindergarten at Myatt is new. So it's kind of a mix at Myatt.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Um, but as far as the, um, biblical things, references that were in there, um, the teacher leaders met this summer and sat down and went through it unit by unit, lesson by lesson, and they've created an outline where they've seen those remarks and it's suggested solution to it. So in a lot of cases, it's just take out this word, take out this phrase, or replace it with something else. Um, so that's where we see the most of it. Uh, we do have a couple places where, like, I can say fourth grade's got a unit where they talk about the Romans. And so there's going to be parts where we can't take it out because it has, it's part of the historical part of it. So it's going to be taught that way, not in a, any way to, you know, do any kind of indoctrination of kids. But there will be pieces that we, we have to leave in because it follows the history. But where it's not necessary for the lesson or necessary for the content of what they're being taught, we're taking those parts out. But, um, they're meeting with their teachers in their CTT time, going over the unit before they teach it, before the, the lessons before they teach it, talking about what they're going to take out, what they're going to replace with, um, so they're, they're right on track. So just wanted to share that with y'all.
Okay, that'll, uh, any questions on that? We move on to the, uh, review and adoption of the campus, uh, campus improvement plans and goals for each campus. This was in your, uh, board book, uh, I'm, I know that the, these are developed with, obviously, at the campus level and with interaction from our leadership team. Was there any questions about any of those that you, uh, had, wanted to discuss here from anybody?
Continuing the same things we've been focused on, uh, the culture with CKH, our academic growth, um, every year, um, communication, so, uh, but they review it every year to make sure that the goals are still aligned to what they're focused on.
And it has been really, uh, you mentioned capturing kids, capturing kids' hearts. It's been, uh, really good to see the district focus on one thing, uh, and, and stay on that path and, uh, start to see improvement in, in the objectives that are involved in capturing kids' hearts, so that's a good, uh, it's not, I mean, it's not the only program that's out there, but you need to pick one and, and, you know, run your, run your offense. Is, uh, any questions on that?
Well, I just wanted to mention that, uh, as far from, from the board's perspective, I think that the board needs to be aware that this is a collaborative effort, not only with Ms. Starry and, and Ms. Martin, but also their affiliation with Amanda Anderson and Rachel Bluhash and all of the special ed department. And then in collaboration with all the principals, and then each campus improvement team, this is a long process. A lot of time and effort goes into it. And then we tie into that all of our instructional based learning that we've been doing this summer, um, and everybody's been trained. There, there appears to be a renewed focus on one pathway of trying to get us all doing the same thing. Not in the same way, everybody's got to have their own, but we, we appear to be focused, is my perception, so. And I don't know if Manda or Alicia or the principals want to say anything, but that's what I'm seeing. Seems to be a, a greater focus on growth of kids. And it's, hasn't, not that it hasn't been, but, you know, as we've been doing this for several years in a row now, it seems to be.
Trying to work smarter.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions, comments? I'll, uh, entertain a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six district campus improvement plans. Have a motion by Mr. Hobbit's second, by Ms. Smith, all in favor, raise your right hand, oppose, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Uh, that takes us to business and operations, um, so we'll be discussing the consideration of approval of final amendments to the twenty-four, twenty-five general operating budget.
Okay, in front of you guys, uh, you're going to see a page that looks like this, it's going to have a, a green tab in the top left-hand corner that actually says revenue. Okay, so what you'll actually look in at right now, and what we're going to basically be talking about is our one nine nine, our general fund. Uh, you'll see in the left-hand column where it says approved, that's what we actually approved for our budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. And you can see it broken down, local, state, federal, other resources. So if you're looking at one nine nine general fund, we had, uh, expected to collect taxes in the amount of thirteen million four hundred and sixty-two dollars and two hundred and nine, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. Well, we ended up collecting fourteen million five hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-nine, which was a million dollars more than what we were actually expecting. The reason we got that excess money was because, uh, there was, uh, more money put on the books by the CAD. Okay, so we think, hey, good deal, we're getting more money. However, that's a bad deal because the state has now given you too much money, okay? So the state has now given you too much money, and so then later on, the state has to take their money back because they overpaid you because you're only allotted a certain amount. So we get more when we get it on the tax side from our taxes. However, but when the state takes it back during the settle-up, when they take it back, they take it back at that full rate. So when we're collecting, they're paying us, you know, we have a compressed rate of sixty-one cent, okay? But we get enrichment pennies, about thirteen cent. That basically takes our, our local, just MNO tax rate, what we operate on, up to, this past year was, uh, seventy-five cent and some change. And so by us collecting more in excess in taxes, the state came back and took their money that they overpaid us back. Does that make sense?
Can you, can you please give it to them in layman's terms, like we talked about with the student code of conduct?
Okay.
Please.
Okay, in layman's terms, we collected more tax dollars.
Why?
Because the CAD, the CAD basically underestimated, and then once they put the thirteen, well, thirteen or fifteen accounts back in that they deleted, it was, I think it was thirteen or fourteen. Thirteen or fourteen accounts, not just like regular, like houses, I'm talking about, like, commercial accounts. So it generated us more tax money.
Like a hundred and something million dollars.
Hundred and ninety million dollars of underestimated revenue that we, that we did not have, that.
Because the CAD.
We can, we can assume what, all I'm telling you is that the, through the CAD's underestimation, the state.
Back a thousand.
The state overestimated what they were going to have to send us. And then when the state sent us their money, the CAD's revalues, recertification, created a situation where we had collected more taxes from the CAD. And then the state required us to send back money that they had already sent us, and they took away our, our golden pennies.
Your enrichment.
Your enrichment pennies.
Yeah, you don't get that.
So we got less back than.
So all of that transpires and it's a net loss for us.
It's a net loss for us on that, that aspect. Also, we do have a declining ADA, which what we're paid on is the number of students that show up.
Yeah.
And, uh, we do have a declining ADA. And so with all that being said, we approved a budget that said that we were going to, revenue wise, we were going to get thirty-seven point five million dollars. And after all of that, we got thirty-six one twenty-four.
But the biggest difference is we have a lower number of students is why we got.
That's, that's one of them, but a bigger, it's, it's, a, a bigger issue is really the CAD.
So that.
Because I gave this under.
Yeah.
Like that, it doesn't, it's not, it.
It's not, it's, it never is a wash.
It doesn't wash, they took more.
They take more as a penalty.
Yeah, because you, you get penalized for.
So, so the.
C A D mistake.
So the El Campo ISD is getting penalized where the mistake is made at the Warren County C A D.
And it's been that one for a long, long time, I think.
Yeah.
But that's, yeah, that's, that's, that's the way it works.
So the state, the state penalizes you, penalizes the C A D for making those mistakes, but they also.
No, it penalizes schools, that, the schools get penalized.
The difference is, the difference is the fourteen cents.
They increase.
That's the difference.
Yeah, yeah, because we don't get the.
We don't get the money.
Correct.
On the fourteen cents.
Yeah, we don't get it on the fourteen cents.
And what do they turn around and do, charge us fifty-seven thousand more to do a service?
Yeah, so and then our C A D contributions this year went up.
Fifty-seven thousand bucks.
So, um, so, so they're. That's us on the rep, that's us on the.
We appreciate our representative to the C A D board.
Yes.
No, I mean, I really, I mean, really, we, we.
Very hard job.
We hope that every one of the taxing entities in the county takes it as serious as we do. And that, and, and, because that's, this is what, year three of a screw-up? Major screw-up?
Yeah.
That, that penalize, every, every taxing entity in the county has to deal with their problems. And, and it makes it impossible to run a school district, which if you go over there and talk to people, they're like, what's the most important thing? You say, oh, our kids are the most important thing, well, get the math right. Because we're losing money. Go ahead.
All right.
Three, three years in a row.
Then we'll look to our next page where it says expenditures. And we'll look up at the, uh, general fund, what we approved versus what we actually spent. We approved, uh, thirty-seven, five thirty-eight, eight fifty-seven, and we spent, uh, thirty-nine, three thirty, eight oh nine, which was an increase of, uh, almost one point eight million dollars on the increase in spending. Um, you can, if you go down and you look at.
Mr. Wells, I think before you go on, I think it's important for you to describe where some of that increased expenditure went. Particularly in regards to the December decisions, because we were not able to provide raises.
Yes, that's what I'm getting ready to go.
Okay, good.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So if you look down, uh, in the one nine nine general fund, you'll see, um, on the far right-hand side in eleven, you'll see the increase due to retention bonuses, uh, in function of eleven. Um, we actually, in thirteen, you'll see we saved some money because we didn't have as much staff development. Um, then you look down in twenty-one, twenty-three, a lot of that was, uh, due to increased, uh, retention bonuses. Uh, because let's, let's, let's remember, the retention bonuses came to us in a form of a payment that was owed to us the prior year. So once we got all of that money, that money rolled into fund balance. Everybody following me?
Mm-hmm.
And so what we basically ended up doing was, we ended up taking that like seven hundred and fifty, almost eight hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance is where it ends up showing up at when you start looking at our, at our books. Um, we look down, you see, uh, appraisal services, uh, C A D appraisal value stuff went up, uh, a little bit. It's contributed to that. We did save about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, um, in the, uh, plant maintenance. Uh, because once we figured out that we had passed the bond, we, uh, held off on some of our other projects that we would have normally done. That was money that we didn't have to scan because we were getting ready to redo those schools. Then you'll see down a little further, you'll see one point one five million, that additional was for the, uh, turf at the stadium. Uh, you'll see on the very bottom, so I can give you an explanation, on operating transfers. That five hundred and thirty-three, nine fifty-two, we had that ESR audit that we went through, and we also went through a food service audit. The ESR audit, we ended up, out of our eight point one or eight point two, whatever, million dollars, we ended up having to give them roughly almost three hundred thousand dollars back. Okay? Uh, and on the food service transfers, that remaining, that food service that we paid back, we actually paid back to ourselves because we couldn't spend it on the local side, so we had to put it back on our federal side, which shows on our federal side that we actually have a surplus, so that's basically a wash. So if you're looking at this, we basically, uh, went over, uh, by almost one point eight million dollars. But the big ticket items were retention bonuses and turf. Those are the big ticket items. Okay, now let's go to the final sheet. Um, general fund balance, okay? Uh, we are, um, I'm just going to go down to the bottom and our August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four fund balance, after we had gotten the money from the state, we were almost at ten million dollars. And we're going to be debiting and, uh, the decrease to our fund balance will be two point nine nine eight one three six is what that will basically entail. So what that entails is the shortfall that we had meeting on revenue with the addition of the money that we added to it with the expenses that we had over and above. Does that make sense? Leaving us with a fund balance just shy of seven million dollars.
It's part of the reason why in the consent agenda, we increased the amount of money that the board contributes because of the increased costs in the turf. And the fact that our previous turf had safety factors because it did not have a pad, it's built right on rock.
Any, uh, questions on the final amendments to the twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget? I will seek a motion to approve. Have a motion by Mr. Dorick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dubratt, all in favor, raise your right hand, oppose, same sign. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We'll discuss and consider approving the ordinance of adopting the 2025 maintenance and operations and interest in sinking tax rates. We'll need, we will have two motions on this, is that right? Two separate motions.
Okay.
Okay.
You're good. You need some water?
No, I'm good. What you'll see is, you're gonna see a, a rate there for the MNO side at point seven four eight seven. And what that actually does is, that's our compressed rate with our almost fourteen pennies added to it. That the compression is actually dictated by the state. So we don't get an opportunity to do anything about that, but we do have the enrichment pennies that we can add, actually add to that to get us to a rate of point seven four eight seven.
Okay, and this is in line with, with exactly what we discussed. I'll point this out. This is in line with exactly what we discussed doing throughout the, the planning for the next, the upcoming year, but also the bond and everything. This is, this jives with that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I will, what page was I on? We have to get the wording right on this. Well, it's not in.
What is this?
Where is the wording at for a specific? Is it on there?
The page of that on there.
Well, it's not in here. It goes from budget. Oh, here we go. Yeah, here it is. On page one forty-six, your board packet is the, is the wording. Mr. Dortick, would you make a motion?
Yeah, okay. I move that we set the tax rate on one hundred dollar valuation for the district for the tax year twenty twenty-five at the MNO rate of point seven four eight seven for the purpose of maintenance and operation.
Have a motion by Mr. Dortick, second by Mr. Ryan. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. For the, I will seek a motion for the principal and interest.
I'll move that we set the tax rate on one hundred dollar valuation for the district for the tax year twenty twenty-five for the purpose of payment of principal and interest on debt at point three oh four oh.
Have a motion by Mr. Dortick, second by Mr. Ryan. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And just to be clear to the board, that sets our tax rate at one point oh five two seven, which has been that rate. How many years in a row is this, Mr. Wells?
Four. Four, yes. So we did not raise.
We have not raised taxes. And in, in effect, I think that what was reported in the paper that Mr. Primo called about the other day is that in actuality, a property value will actually see a decrease if they're a homeowner because of the increased.
Home.
Home state exemption. So they'll actually see a decrease in school district property taxes.
Okay. Item number B three, that'll be the discussion and consideration of approval of ordinance adopting the proposed twenty-five twenty-six general operating budget.
Okay. You will have this form in front of you. Those other pages are just basically breakdowns. But our general operating budget for the twenty-five twenty-six school year, if you look for the, at the total at the bottom, is thirty-nine million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. Okay, so that is an increase over last year's budget by one point seven million dollars. Of that one point seven million dollars, about one point five to one point six of that will be given to us in the teacher retention allotment. Okay, so that money is gonna be coming through us from the state for everybody that's coded zero eight seven. And so that money is actually coming directly from the state, goes straight to the teachers. So anybody that has three to four years of experience, got four thousand dollars on their salary, and anybody five years or more got eight thousand. So.
And that comes in in the state revenue?
Yes. Yes, that's gonna be coming in, in the state revenue. So in actuality, what we're really, if you're really looking at it, we're really only, it's a wash on our budget. We're basically raising our budget roughly two hundred thousand dollars.
And our ADA is, is set at a decreased.
So this projection is at a decrease of fifty students over the one prior. Okay, so I, I.
So it follows, it follows what our recent trend is.
Correct. But we still need some more kids to show up. And if we don't get more kids to show up, we need the ones that we have to show up more.
And I think the board has been, been getting the updates from me through, Ms. Starry sends me updates from the campuses. And I think district-wide, we are down thirty-nine students. Thirty-seven of those happen to be at Myatt Elementary in the, in the pre-K and kindergarten. And Ms. Kui is working hard to try and get more students to come back to public schools of the lower ages. But this has been a trend since, since COVID.
Do you have a, do you have a tendency, if I remember correctly, that the, that after Labor Day, pre-K picks up?
We see.
I know it's across the district, but.
We will have.
Specifically there.
So in real, we'll go a little bit after Labor Day, we will have some students coming back to El Campo out of the country.
Yeah. I like that some of those just, no matter what the calendar says, school always starts after that. You just can't. We can go to the, consider.
No, there's a, there's a, there's a ordinance.
Yeah, no, we're gonna, we're gonna consider the, I'm seeking a motion on that, is that right? Okay, I'll seek an ordinance, a, a motion on adopting the ordinance of, of the proposed twenty-five twenty-six general operating budget at the proposed numbers there in your, in your board packet of forty-seven million, one, one nine, zero, eleven.
I move to approve as presented.
Mr. Dubruck has the motion. I seek a second from Mr. Ryan. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, approved. Next is authorization for the redemption and defeasance of outstanding bonds.
The board in, in fashion that we've discussed to try and continue to take care of our facilities, we continue to recommend that we defees bonds to open up an opportunity for us to continue to work in the future on a future potential growth of our campuses by, you know, five or so years down the road, building a new structure for the early childhood in grades K one and two. But thereby reducing our MNO side by going from five campuses to four as presented by the facility committee back in January.
And this, this resolution is largely, I mean, it's largely symbolic, is that?
Correct. So basically what this resolution does is it gives us the ability to defees up to one point nine five million dollars of the money that we're gonna collect on the INS side.
Right.
So in our INS rate, that point three oh four oh that we've just, just approved, we'll be able to generate enough excess on the INS side to be able to continue to pay down the principal and defees those bonds.
There's, there's no penalty to paying those bonds off early?
No.
Then there's no reason to.
Right. Have a, I'll seek a motion. Have a motion on Mr. Dortick and a second by Mr. Cannell for the, to authorize the redemption and defeasance of outstanding bonds. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're knocking things out. No review items, that takes us to closed session.
Unless you want me to do real quick while Ms. Starry's still here, the twenty-four twenty-five accountability.
Yeah, let's do that. We're gonna skip down to item ten D one and two.
And she and I are just gonna kind of team tag this. You wanna get a cup? I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hand one to you earlier, Ms. Starry, I apologize. That's three goes your way. Four goes your way. One for you, Ms. Garza. So board members, these are the twenty-four and twenty-five accountability, accountability ratings by campus. Page one and two are high school, twenty-five, and then twenty-four. Pages three and four are middle school, twenty-five and twenty-four. Pages five and six are Northside, twenty-five and twenty-four. And page seven and eight are Hutchins, twenty-five, twenty-four. Since they both just came out. What I wanted you to notice about the high school, because I gave you the district about at the last board meeting. So this is the campuses individually. So high school is a, an A-rated campus with a ninety percent overall score. You'll notice their school progress is a ninety-one, and closing the gaps was an eighty-nine, and their student achievement was an eighty-seven.
That closing the gaps number, I don't think we've ever. That's, that's getting after it.
So then on page three, if you wanna skip over, because the twenty-four data is now we're rolling. And you'll notice that the middle school, they have, have an overall score of seventy-eight, which is an, an improvement. Their student achievement was at a seventy-four, which is an improvement. Their school progress is an eighty-two, which is an improvement. And their closing the gaps is a little bit lower, but they improved in all the other areas.
Yeah, you have them swapped.
I do have them swapped?
Yes.
Dang it. I'm sorry. Sorry. I screwed up, Ms. Starry.
There's one right behind it.
Yeah. Twenty-four. Yeah, it's there, it's just they're swapped in the order.
Yeah. But they're seventy-seven overall rather than a seventy-eight.
But they close the gaps a little bit more, three percent. And then if you look at Northside, they're an overall score of an eighty-five. Student achievement was at a seventy-four, school progress was at an eighty-three, and you'll notice on closing the gaps, they're at an eighty-eight. And then Hutchins, their overall scale score was a seventy-three. Student achievement was a seventy, school progress was a seventy-three, and closing the gaps was a seventy-two, which is up considerably from the day, from the year before.
So at the next meeting, we'll bring you like the trends, we'll look at this data in more depth. But we wanted to give you the overview tonight so that you could see where we're at. Dig a little deeper next, next meeting.
Yeah, we didn't have enough time to start school and, and dig deep. But we didn't wanna miss the opportunity to share it with you. So the high school had a celebration last Thursday. It was a really nice, nice celebration of the, of the gap. You'll probably notice we got headlines on the.
Yeah, newspaper.
Front page of the newspaper.
Did us right, thank you.
Very, very proud of him. That's two years in a row.
Yes. Well, we, we appreciate.
The hard work y'all did.
Hard work and, and the achievement that it's not, it's not easy. Especially when they, you know, you're working blind because this, the rating for twenty-four didn't hit until the same day as the rating for twenty-five. It's like, what do you, I don't know why they, why they even bother putting it out, it's unusable. But anyway, we can.
But we are gonna bring back the more detailed look in, in September.
So that'll take us to closed session, so, and there will be, there will be action after closed session, so.
Yep.
Yeah. If you wanna stick around, you can, if you're not, but Valerie.
It's only about me, everybody, so.
Time is now seven oh three, and we will move now into tech, closed session under Texas Government Code five five one point oh seven four personnel matters. Time is now seven twenty-eight, and we'll reconvene in an open meeting. Any action coming out of closed session?
I move to approve an amendment to the superintendent's contract as discussed in closed session. Further, I move to authorize the board president superintendent to work with legal counsel as necessary to finalize and execute the contract amendment.
Have a motion by Mr. Dubruck, second by Mr. Ryan. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That takes us down to community and government relations, which we don't have anything going on there. And there being no further business to come to the floor this board at seven twenty-nine, we are adjourned.